Okay. Meeting to order, please. This, for the district will note, our agenda tonight has an open session followed by a closed session followed by an open session during the closed session. Non-participants in the closed session will be asked to leave. Okay, call to order, please.
Nick Wolf, here in West End, Mike here, Tom Murray.
Councilmember Wainwright, at seven two. Thank you. Next, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda that's just been suggested tonight's meeting agenda.
Motion, sentence.
All in favor.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Our first topic tonight is, um, eighty street and highway one fifty-one intersection project and Shane's. And provide some information as to why we've gotten that funded.
So, the, uh, Liz Bird with the MPO just submitted out, uh, the request for applications for, uh, projects, um, if you recall, about a year ago, maybe a little more, we started the, uh, twenty fifty long-range transportation plan. Maybe do it every five years, you go through, look at, um, transportation projects. That's roadways, trails, and transit, basically bus routes, um, buses and bus routes for transit, which doesn't really apply to Fairfax at this time, but. But that process, all the communities in the MPO, which Fairfax is one of them, submits their project list, and then they go through a scoring process and narrow those projects down. So, they, those projects that get narrowed down are on the fiscally constrained projects list. And I, I think that was part of what I submitted, um, in the packet, I don't know much you've had the chance to go through, but. Fairfax has a, uh, roadway, urban project, and they have a trail project, um, both of our. Our ways, they're, they're banded periods in that fiscally constrained plan list. Um, really the focus at this point, I think, is the intersection project, um, eighty street and highway one fifty-one intersection project. And, uh, that is in the twenty thirty-five and twenty thirty-nine time period, um, the projects listed there, but. All the projects within the fiscally constrained projects list are eligible to apply. So, um, so the applications are due January, oh, the eleventh, I believe, somewhere around there. Just slightly before the January council meeting, so. When we put the, uh, eighty street, highway one fifty-one intersection project down there, from a number standpoint, we anticipated, um, a roundabout being installed there, but we didn't specify a roundabout or traffic lights with turn lanes, it could be anything, really. Um, we didn't go into that much detail, but now at this point, if we're gonna apply to do some sort of improvements at that intersection to determine what we're gonna do, if it's gonna be a roundabout, or if it's gonna be the turn lanes with, uh, traffic signals. So, um, so I think what we need to know then, the council is, number one, do you want to submit an application? And then, if so, number two, we want to submit it as a roundabout, or we want to submit it as traffic signals and turn lanes. So, couple things with that. The, the application, as I mentioned, is due, uh, January eleventh, paper tape. They, um, the next round of applications would be in two years, so if council's like, you know, just not ready to do that at this time, or let's put it off. Um, it will come around again in two years, council could decide to apply or submit an application for that intersection. Um, it would still be on the fiscally constrained plan, it would fall off, uh, the the long-range transportation plan would do other five years, so that'd be another, you know, five years, so this would still be on the fiscally constrained plan, um. If nothing would really change, it would be actually a little bit closer to the time period that it's currently listed under. Um, but if you wanna go ahead and proceed with the application, and there's nothing harm, you know, it's not gonna hurt the project or anything, you just may not get awarded the funding at this time, you may need to kick down the road for two years, or four years. Um. The.
Isn't the, what, if we're applying now, it's for funding from twenty-nine thirty-one?
Yeah, so that, yeah, if we, if the city then got awarded the funding, it's for, I think, by twenty thirty-one, thirty-two, was it the email? Um, that I had cemented, so that, after we got the request, Mayor Beer sent the end of Chris and I met, kind of over some of this stuff and, and looking at details, but. Yeah, I think if, if the city applies, gets granted the, um, the award, it would be in a fiscal year, twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-two, maybe it's twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one. But.
Chris, when you say funding, there's about one point five million in this fund that Lynn County gives out, so if you don't know how much they could give, or is it to fund the entire?
So, so, yeah, but, the reason, if you look at the fiscally constrained plan for projects list, this project scored the second highest out of all municipal, the highest with Edward Road Extension stage one, was, but the score is sixty, this one has scored fifty-nine. Um, so that one was put at the top of the list, because it scored slightly higher. This one got pushed back to the next time band, the next five-year period, because there wasn't enough funds in that five-year period, you covered both of them. So they moved this one down, so this one may, you know, be considered, but they may look at it and say, we don't have funding, so you're not gonna get funded at this point, but you might, because there may be other funds that come available for that Edward Road project, or they may decide to kick it down a little bit, so it doesn't hurt to apply, you'll make it funded, there's not, you know, obviously, if, if that Edward Road Extension project's a full, you know, forehead, and, you know, everything, and they go ahead with it, this is their only source of funding, then Fairfax probably wouldn't be granting funds for this, you know, next two-year period, but we don't know that, if you don't apply, we won't. Um. So, and out of that fifteen million, I think, what we had applied for was the STVG grant, um, which is the road grant, basically, and I think it's like forty-seven percent, there's like seven million, seven and a half million that would be granted for projects in this two-year period. So, it's not full fifteen million, that fifteen million is the transit roads and trails. So. Yeah, so to set this point, if we, if we know, proceed with the application, you know, awarded the money, it would be for construction twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one, something like that, so.
To find out how much they would give towards this roundabout, not to fund the whole.
No, they don't say that. They would, they would fund the whole thing, but that's what they're saying, is they probably, if they don't have the money there to fund it, they would fund other five-year charter, until the money is built up there, that they would fund this.
Yeah, I don't think it would hurt to apply for, have a go for a traffic light instead of a roundabout, in my opinion, less costly, and considering roundabouts decrease high-speed, but increase low-speed collisions. There's already enough accidents out there, I see it every day, um. And I was talking to some individuals in terms of numbers and traffic count, and you guys probably already know this, the Google data center has about three thousand people out there working right now, by next year, it's gonna be up to about ten thousand. So if you think traffic's crappy now at that intersection, wait a year.
Well, this project will interest that.
I know, exactly, but we got data centers, you got the power plant's gonna be going up there soon enough, putting us all down window, but. So, we got a lot of projects in this area that are gonna be on the horizon, and the sooner, and even without that increase in traffic from construction, we have an increase in traffic period, as, you know, we can see homes there in other places, and I can't tell you how many accidents that I've either helped out with, or witnessed from my window all the time, and then they getting better, and it's getting more frequent.
This project going on us, we have all the say what we're gonna do, but it's a DOT, I just.
So, yeah, the, the city would have to take the lead on it, and, you know, request funding, then obviously, we'd have to work with the DOT, you know, to get it approved and everything. I don't know, so it'd be just like the bridge project, it says federal funds. So, engineering and right-of-way acquisition would be all the city's responsibility, this would be just, you know, it'd be an eighty percent match, up to eighty percent match for construction.
Would there be any DOT participation, or are it's all on us?
This grant would just be all on the city, so, and we talked, when we, when we met here, we talked about, you know, other possible grants, um, you know, there's, if you did a roundabout, there'd be, you know, possible safety funds, which is up to five hundred thousand. Um, but if it's coming from the same kitty, and if, if the safety funds is a federal, you know, grant, and I wouldn't get it, but if it's state, then maybe you could.
Doesn't DOT, DOT not care one way or another for a roundabout or traffic, you know, traffic lights?
I think, I mean, I, I can't speak about the DOT, I didn't, generally speaking, they, they promote the roundabout, because it's, it's the safer. It was numbered, basically, to me, to Mike's point, you know, I don't know if that number of crashes go up, but the number of what do they call, um, injury, fatal, fatality crashes significantly go up because of traffic signals.
All right, there's some nasty ones at Stony Point, what do you want to mention, Tom?
And which where?
One fifty-one at Stony Point Road, that stopped right there, some kind of big banger there.
Yeah, that's.
So, once we, if we do this project, the, the intersection itself, the DOT takes care of minutes on that, or is we don't at that point, or how does?
Well, it's still in the DOT right away, yeah, and so what we, what we submitted on the long-range transportation plan is to improve the intersection, and then since the intersection improvements would go, you know, five hundred feet, I mean, it's hard to say exactly until you get in the design, you know, each direction on the highway, it may go out a little further, about eighty street to the north and to the south, they may go five hundred feet, so. The, what we've submitted in that application is very, you know, preliminary, there's not a lot of detail in it, but we assumed then just to improve all of eighty street between one fifty-one and West Cemetery Road, or East Cemetery Road, so that intersection was approved, you know, eight, nine years ago. You know, so what we look at doing is improving that as a, as part of this project, improving eighty street out here by City Hall, yeah, to the south, and, um, turn that into a, an intersection, curb and gutter, and probably extend the trail, so part of that project goes around, called extended trail from the north side for future trail pedestrian growth for Darlin' Ice, and down eighty street, type of the existing trail on East Cemetery. Now, if you did turn lanes and traffic signals, that probably wouldn't be part of that, just leave it as a rural section that way.
To Mike's point, if you did traffic signals, you probably don't have much right-of-way access, that position will.
Probably not as much as the running room, no, no. The traffic, you know, the, the, to Mike's point, the traffic signal would be more cost-effective upfront. There's, there's more long-term costs, um, you know, take care of traffic signals and stuff like that, the city would have to coordinate with either Marion or the city of Cedar Rapids to maintain and maintain those, and have an agreement with them to do that, and, you know, those costs, you know. They, they're not huge costs, they're additional costs, they do, you know.
No, that works, what's that? That, that's how that works, we didn't know, make it's agreement with whoever, making tracks.
Yeah. I know Hyawatha does, they've got a lot more to what, you know, if they're trying to put traffic signals in out here, they, everything wouldn't, wouldn't make sense to. You know, you just.
We have an agreement with the city of Cedar Rapids now, we paid out fourth of it.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Or you do.
Or we have one corner of it.
Yeah.
And then, uh, you know, the traffic signals, the other thing, I guess, might be a little concerning, just traffic back, you know, you know, maybe the busy time from that.
That was my question, coming, traffic heading south, if it got backed up, people coming over the hill by the car wash would possibly bump into that.
Yeah, that was the same concern going to North Autumn Fairfax, I don't, five, six years ago, there was that flashing signal light, and I, you know.
I don't see many. I don't, did the, I don't see many accidents on the hill, I see plenty here, and I know there's, I don't see as many as more, but on the intersection of Stony Beckley slash one fifty-one, it's usually that's the intersection itself. Someone turning in front.
I think the MPO is fine, but residents are losing patience, I think we need to do it now, and only look at the roundabout. And not necessarily the other roads, because twelve million's a little much to be.
Well, the twelve million is just so, twenty thirty-nine, so that's the money that's, is in the, the yeah, in the, uh, fiscally constrained plan, it's showing in the twenty thirty-five to twenty thirty-nine, so it's assumed the funding would come in there in twenty thirty-nine, so. Obviously, if it happened in twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one, it wouldn't be the twelve million, it's inflated at five percent, those numbers are slated at five percent. But, yeah, it's a big number, no matter what.
And you're gonna start planning design now, get everything going by twenty ninety, right? It'd take at least a year of design and.
Well, you'd have to do design, right-of-way acquisitions, all that stuff takes some time, you know, you'd wanna get started, and I say you have to get started, you know, you probably wouldn't find out till June, right? There's a schedule in that email, I don't remember exactly what it was, but they finally awarded it in June or July, um. But, yeah, you, you would wanna take it along fairly quickly, because you, by the time you do your preliminary design, get your right-of-way acquisitions figured out, get that all in place, and then get the final design done and constructed, it'll come quicker than you know, but.
Is there a maximum traffic volume the roundabout will hold versus a signal?
So, in the TEE study that AHR, so if you recall, when, when Bernie Green was mayor, shortly after the bridge projects were done, he was related to this, to the, uh, DOT about the speed limit signs in there.
And they raised them.
Yeah, so they, so they looked at that.
I know, which, yeah.
And this, a TEE study, which, something that's funded through the DOT, it makes just a real, basically, it's a cookie cutter thing, and they plug in some information, and they, they threw in information about that, um, you know, they talked a little bit about turn lanes and traffic signals, they talked a little bit about roundabout, they just do a cookie cutter roundabout. The, the original thought was, you know, initially, maybe you could start as a single lane roundabout, and then maybe expand out on a couple double lanes, kinda like to run up my vehicle, highway one fifty-one, I guess my suggestion would be, you know, obviously, build the less expensive at this point, would be set it up so you can expand future, you know, lanes, if you need to get the right-of-way up front and and create it, so if you need to expand a, an additional lane on part of it, in the future, you can do that.
I would guess eighty percent, seventy, eighty percent of the traffic that hits here, hits that roundabout, hits this intersection also. So, they've got a two, two-lane there, do a single lane initially here. They don't use that two-lane, right? They don't, one-lane or two-lane, I went yesterday, it's clockwise, the tra, excuse me, traffic is counterclockwise. Coming out of the station, someone went clockwise into traffic to try and turn and go into town.
Oh, no.
Every time I go through, now, when I was driving my old truck, every time I went to the two lanes, I wouldn't, and I wasn't with my kids, it's like, someone please side swat, because they all, I need a new truck, they all go right across the two lanes, every single time, dude.
Yeah.
But that wasn't the layout either, because the reason why it's two lanes is because it goes into two lanes, correct, we only have one.
For now.
Well, it, it, yes, it's driven by, by traffic council, and, and to Mike's point, I mean, it's, that's something that this report did, did in the TEE study, just pulled some numbers in there, look at future growth and stuff, so, I mean, whether it's construction temporarily, or industrial, essential, and stuff. You don't want, whatever you're building, you know, like thirty-five, you wanna do it for twenty fifty, twenty fifty-five, so.
And I know it's been, it's a, it's a, the, the, the goalpost shift, but the longest time we talked about is four-lane out there, and it got changed to a super three. So, I mean, and who knows if it doesn't go back to a four at some point, so you do have to accommodate up to two lanes, but again, I think the cheaper and faster installation would be lights, I mean, my personal preference aside, and I know every time I, if we go to an auto, and I don't know if Tom experiences this, every time I go to the auto collision conferences and stuff, we talk about full range of toilets, and one of them is I see more accidents at roundabouts, now they're low-speed, which is good, I don't think high-speed, but you see more accidents. I'm not saying traffic lights are better, or, excuse me, um, safer or ideal, but I think for this intersection, for both costs for us in the short term, and how fast it can be implemented, I think a light is a better idea. And if we're second place in the funding, I don't know which network project we're talking about, or what the projected costs are, that any amount we can get that would speed it up, especially if it's a lower-cost project, it could be ideal to me.
Says Hyawatha, so I must never know.
Yeah, at Flare's Ferry, they want.
But again, you're running a roundabout.
They just wanna extend, um, paths, yeah, right, to Hyawatha up to Boise. Um, so, a, a point that I made one day when the DOT was here talking about the change in the safety. Um, so, as somebody that comes up here and tries to turn right when a man of traffic is coming, okay? So, right now, the people that wanna go on Eightieth, they go over their turn lane, and they're waiting, I don't have to contend with them. I'm only contending with the people going straight, or maybe somebody coming from Eightieth. You put that roundabout in, everybody's gonna come in front of Eightieth Street. You know, the people, the, the people going north all have to come, so we'll have to be waiting for everybody now. I've, I just don't know how that makes it better, but.
I know that's some issues, I haven't wanted Mount Burden, kinda the same way, the heavy traffic stacks up, and it's hard to get cross-traffic.
And that's part of the nice thing, you do get temporary backups, you know, at seven thirty, four o'clock, and eleven thirty at night, but you would have lights that are sensor-based, they wouldn't be timed, they would be based on that, and that helps get the people that are coming off of one hundred, then they're coming down and trying to go across and come into like new Fairfax on the backside. That gives them better chance of getting to there, instead of waiting and backing up along Eightieth, and back this way as eight million cars coming flying through from Baytown to town. And on the top, in feedback from residents, they don't like roundabouts, for a myriad of reasons, family's personal preference, but they don't like it.
Poor gosh, now, who'd you ask?
Lots of people.
You just see that, this room besides you, that, when the, when the Cedar Rapids said that meeting about the roundabout at Dean, remember? But standing room only here, there's no room in the parking.
I remember.
Block, and I ducked, didn't hear one positive comment from a rest. Shane, have you been paying attention to, um, the three eighty, uh, proposal, that they're gonna add two round, want to add two roundabouts at Swisher?
That's on the on-ramp, off-ramp, yeah.
Right, you know, and they're asking for public comment on that, do you have any feel for?
I personally like roundabouts, but I mean, it, yeah, I mean, that's a completely different situation, it's, it's just instead of putting lights at the you know, I have an off, I think, for roundabouts, go out of the thing in their own goal. You see it more and more now, you know, to Mike's point, I mean, if you look at the numbers, it says roundabouts decrease, decrease traffic. Old signal, low-impact traffic, accidents, and, you know, high-impact, high-impact reduces it by seventy-eight percent, low-impact by about thirty percent, now. You can, you can look up whatever numbers you want, but everything I've seen, the TEE reported touches base on that. Um, those are older numbers too, but you can look up other, other stuff, and it typically shows that it reduces all types of traffic, and I think, you know, I do believe you probably see a lot of low-impact accidents, but I think if people get more used to it, driving them, that's gonna also improve. You know, people get more familiar with that, um, yeah, I, I mean, older people tend not to like change, I mean, that's just how it is, roundabouts, just when you, you you're used to driving, you know, traffic signals and stuff like that, and roundabouts different, but they're becoming more popular in the area, most people have been riding from now for a few years, but especially now for Fairfax, there's the one on Bundy Road, so it's not, not like you gotta drive to the north side of town to get to them, but it's just that, to me, I guess my thoughts on, you know, not liking it, it's just people don't like change. But, it is more expensive, from a timing standpoint, the construction would take a little bit longer, longer, but the funding, I don't know if it'll impact funding. You know, if it doesn't get funded in this timeframe, if the city decides to move forward with traffic signals, that may impact elsewhere, isn't the next long-range transportation plan, it may not, I mean, I can't tell you that for sure. So, you know, if, if the city says, if we go forward with the construction improvements, let's apply. You know, his score is the score at this point, it's, that's really getting into the TEE, you know, I'm sorry to get into the, uh, fiscally constrained plan, but you know, we put it in there, kinda left open, if, that, that score may change in five years. You know, if it doesn't get funded in the next couple, you know, application periods, and, you know, they move forward, and the city goes forward with the um, turn lane traffic signals. But it is, it is a much more cost-effective project upfront, so, I mean, it's, either way, it's it's improvements to the stick, to the, to the intersection, it's just.
You say earlier that they had funding figured for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, or twenty-nine?
Well, I mean, you can request funding on the application, so the funding in place for twenty-nine is already there, but things get moved around, so there may be a little bit of fund available on twenty-nine, so I was talking with Liz, um, with the MPO about that, and she's like, well, the funding is for twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one. You can request funding for twenty twenty-nine, but there's not a lot of funding there, so if you have a big project, you judge it's. Um, so the thought is you request it for twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one. See how you, for, I guess, for you.
Another question, if we submitted it as traffic signals instead, and then something prompted us to change our mind, at what point would be our?
My, the application deadline is July eleventh, and, and that's where, that's why I needed to know, it was, it was like January eleventh. And if you, you know, again, I don't know the background at all, right, there was a very rough number that we put in there, you know, Dan mentioned the twelve million, we obviously tried to put it in high, and that's an inflated number for twenty thirty-nine, but I think the number was around six million for five years out, when we filled out the application, you're at least, I can't, so, filled it out in twenty-four, twenty thirty, five, six years in relation, so, you know, I think the total number was six to seven million, you know, for twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one construction. Um, so let's say that's the number you get funded, you know, maybe the traffic signals and, and turn lanes is three and a half of it, or whatever, um, you know, that's what you apply for, that's what you apply for, you can't come back, you know, in April and say, oh, we wanna up it, you, you applied already, so. That's, that's why we need to know which direction you wanna go, because that's that what you're committed to.
But if they didn't approve the funding?
Oh, you're gonna turn on and change your mind in two years.
Right.
Yeah, that, that's not locked in, that's not true, it's not, I mean, it's in the tab for twelve million, there's so many different. It's in the fiscally constrained plan for twelve million, so if yeah, if the city wanted to apply this year, with traffic, it's traffic signals and turn lanes, and it doesn't get approved in two years, like, you change your mind, but. You know, and it's one of those things, we need to get in by the eleventh, need the council to sign off on the application. So, I don't need an absolute answer tonight, but if you wanna move forward with the application, we can start working on that. And at the December ninth council meeting, we would need a, we'd need a final decision by then, so we can finish up. And at the December ninth council meeting, we would need a, we'd need a final decision by that, so we can finish up our, you know, our estimate, maybe like that. In the application, and then we'd have to have a special, January fifth, sixth, seventh, whatever, in that week, a week before the normal. You know, just, uh, sign off on the, pass a resolution to approve the application.
Is there someone that likes a roundabout, is there some agency, DOT, or somebody that can look at this? The next month? And to get their expert opinion?
I can reach out and see if they wanna have somebody here at the meeting on December ninth, if you need, buy some feedback if you want.
Yeah, I mean, maybe you said that T, you know, it's kind of rough, general number, they throw it all in, and it's not real detailed, but. Is there some way to get something more detailed, which would help with the direction of which option to pursue?
What, what do you mean when you say more detail?
Well, you said that T is a general.
The T is, the T report is, it touches on everything from speed limit, uh. To different, I mean, it's not just specifically to this intersection, it's through the whole highway section through the.
Something just to get more definitive on the DOT, for example, I'm just using them as an example to say. Based on the numbers and what we see, we suggest this option, and this is why.
I, I think they're gonna suggest the roundabout, I mean, like, again, I can't speak for them, we can ask somebody to come here. But I think generally, from a safety standpoint, they would, they would support the roundabout, and again. I know a lot of things comes down to dollars, but there's also value to lives and to injuries and stuff like that, and how do you crunch that number? I'm sure you get down and say, well, you know, the average injury is worth, you know, five hundred thousand, you know, because a death is a million and whatever, I don't know what, I'm sure you can. Dig in there and find that, and you can say, okay, over twenty years, there's this, and you can come up to a dollar, dollar, that's what it comes down to. Um, you know, that's what's gonna help you make a decision, but I haven't done that, and, and I, I, I'm sure it can be done, but.
So for sure tonight, Shane, you need to know whether the council wants to.
Yes.
And then December ninth, you would need decision on what that something is.
Yep, we need to have a final decision, and I can reach out and see if, you know, the end of the year, somebody can provide, you know. Somebody with some information now, or information was better, right? If that's what you'd like, I don't know what your guys' thoughts are, but.
Sam Shay, what, is our, is the public contact person, all right?
I think so, yeah, yeah, and I can reach out to, is Sam Shay, Sam Shay's on the M P O now? That.
Yes, he repeat, plays Kathy.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So I can reach out to him and see if, if he would be willing, or to have somebody else that might have a little bit more. You know, background in this area, and then, you know, show up between and provide some more information, I don't know what exactly you could provide, but. Yes, you know, I, I'm gonna hear Shane should throw that idea on all two guys' thing, or.
So. We would still need a motion right from then to apply?
Well, at, at very least, just giving direction to start working on the application, because you gotta take official action, waiting hasn't ready to submit.
Okay. So is that what you're giving Shane guidance then?
So we'll go ahead and, and start putting a little effort in the application, um, I'll reach out to Sam Shay, Sam Shay. And see if, if he or someone else with the DOT can come and touch base on this to provide counsel a little bit more information on that. December ninth.
Do we need updated traffic counts to help decide?
No, well, we would need that to move forward with, uh, the designing way. I don't know if it's gonna, you know. You want, like you said, you wanna make sure you're planning for, you know, you can do the traffic counts and then projecting growth, you know, based on planning documents and, you know. So you can have somebody just plan, things like that, and project out your, your growth, and then design it for, you know, twenty years out. Then, when you want, like I said, it's a lot of, if we designed a single lane, you can still. Design it for future expansion, letting it pay for all run, but. So.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Shane. All right, moving on to item number six, this is where we need a possible motion to go into closed session. Evaluate professional competency of an individual who has been hiring performance, if this start is being considered. Need a motion?
Motion, promotion, that.
All fair and.
All right, all right.
Okay, public motion on individual's leave, if you remain.